What do you want? I'm hoping we don't have to use all of your tape. It all depends. All right, so I called the order of the March eleventh meeting of the Rollins for Select Board. Ms. Noel is excused for the evening. She has the flu, so I think we're all happy that, um, we're not happy she has the flu. I don't want that to get out. Happy that she's home resting and not spreading around, so we wish her speedy recovery. First order of business is the approval of minutes in our fourth meeting. Are there any additions or?
Did we get the March fourth minutes?
We're gonna table it and not take it up.
Okay.
I want you to have a chance to see it. I'm pretty sure we did. I remember reading them.
Okay.
But we can take it up next week, not the end of the world. Hear the input? I don't want us to vote on something you have a chance to see.
The problem might be is that they, they won't go on the web until two or three weeks from now.
Wow, the unapproved ones can go up, right? Can we say they're not approved?
No.
Can we put them on before? A draft of them, I think, right?
We can manage it.
We'll, we'll, we'll put a draft up somewhere.
She's gonna be away next week, but we can figure it out.
Oh, all right, well, I'm sorry you'll be away, but hopefully we'll figure it out. Just not for any of the theories reasons, so. Okay, can you read the input?
No.
All right, Department head business, George, come on up. I won't read through the list and make you wait. So you had high praise, I'll start off this way for you, from the police chief last week when we were here. You were, you, you had been out all night plowing for, he said that he got lots of compliments. He was just happy with the road, so, good job. You like that?
Mm-hmm.
And you've gotten lots of praise on Facebook, someone tells me. I didn't read it, but, um, for all the wonderful plowing you're doing on Portland Avenue, so.
Oh, yeah.
And I won't, I won't let them, because they're very happy that a light bulb hasn't been taken out this year. So we'll take the praise, even though we don't.
Yeah, we don't plow, we'll take the praise, yeah, just for it. Uh, we have a bill for fifteen hundred and eighty-two dollars for Nick.
For the truck.
Okay. Should we move it there?
Yeah, I'd love to move purchase order fifteen sixty-three to Mick Body Works and Truck Repair for fifteen hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty-six cents for repairs to truck one.
All right, one second. So let's go through what's, uh, let's see, how bad was it? But all had to do with the fuel lines, right?
The whole fuel lines, basically, and, yeah.
All right. Good lord.
We do have hydraulic leak on it right now. We're trying to locate, which, uh, hopefully it's just holes.
Hopefully, hopefully not, while we, uh, let's get some more weather at the end of the week, right? Or beginning of next week, beginning of next week, I guess, I said.
Yeah.
But plus be, plus be in the high forties, I don't know how much you're gonna get, but still, probably just a nuisance, right?
All right, we don't need it.
All right, no, I agree. I'm tired of snow. All right, any question?
No question.
All right, so all those in favor of purchase order, oh, sorry, let me back up. We're in service, but we have a.
Yeah, the sand is the only thing that's, we're losing hydraulic fluids, so we're not using the sanding portion. It's, it's a line that goes to the sanders.
Okay, that's what's, it's just affects the, the sander at the moment or not.
Right, if we run the sander, we're losing hydraulic fluids, so.
Okay, no sander at the moment, then, not in that way. All right, so all those in favor of purchase order fifteen sixty-three, say aye. Aye opposed? I don't know. Okay, you gotta sign it. I'm gonna sign it first, so. You don't want that, hear that? All right, someday, you want to. Someday I'll get it, all right.
And I have a purchase order of two hundred ninety-six dollars and three cents to Pike Industries for a two-ton of cold patch. Two and a half ton of cold patch. I don't like using stuff that's too expensive.
You ready?
Working out better with, down in Sligo, we're just putting stone dust in it. It'll last me longer than the cold patch, so.
Move purchase order fifteen sixty to Pike Industries for two ninety-six oh-three for cold patch.
One second, so say it again, George, you mean what down there?
On Sligo, we fill in the holes with stone dust.
Stone dust?
And it lasts things twice as long as cold patch.
It seems to hold up as long as it don't get like heavy rain.
If you get the rain, it freezes, and cold patch comes out of the hole.
Right, 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 wow.
Can't use cold patch everywhere, I mean, uh, stone dust everywhere, so.
I see, I know you've been busy putting it up, but I've seen it around, so. Places are doing business this time of year, so.
Yeah, that's expensive, you know, a lot of the beans.
No, I know. Any other discussion of fifteen sixty? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Well, thank you for what you're doing to help mitigate the pothole situation. Ever easy.
Starless bolt ten dollars a ton, this stuff's a hundred and fifty cent, no, it's a ton, so.
Appreciate that too, George. Do you need that? That's quite the difference.
Yeah. Stone dust, basically, used to be, they used to give it away, but now they're making money with it, so.
Well, they have, everyone, everyone has to eat.
You wanna talk about the light bulbs?
Well, do you have any other purchase orders?
I don't, uh, just that much.
Okay, so we have, um, dog way signs, we're gonna take one until after tomorrow, see how tomorrow goes. Won't bring it up again. I know it's been a topic of conversation online, from what I understand.
Yeah, I've seen a few posted.
I used to live on Second Street, I can tell you that is god awful, and it's not much better up on Heritage. People, people just, it's mind-boggling to me, really. We're getting, we'll wait till after tomorrow, but there's probably more than one place in town we could put signs up as well, I guess my point, so.
There isn't, isn't there?
There is indeed, but you gotta catch the, hang on, we'll get into it, well, let's wait till after tomorrow. Transfer station attendant position, so I understand we had someone who's moving out of state?
Yeah, he's moving to Georgia.
A little warmer, I understand, so, good for him. But he hasn't been with us very long yet.
No, he hasn't, and we did not pursue getting his license and stuff, so.
Well, that's good.
We waited, I mean, I can see how things were going for a month or so, and, you know, sorry for that, so.
Okay, all right, well, then we need to, um, we need to add, put an end for that position. It was one of the full-time ones, all right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we're okay with putting an end into? All right. You gotta take care of that?
I will take care of it.
All right, thank you. All right, light bulb disposal and business, right? Business use of transfer station.
We looked into what it costs to get rid of them, so, I mean.
The fluorescent bulbs?
Fluorescent bulbs, yeah. And, uh, plus, we have to pay for the boxes to put them in, so it costs us about seven dollars for the boxes, plus, get, we have to hold thirty bulbs and stuff. And the thing is, if we charged a dollar a bulb, we'd be, I think, fair to everybody, you know? The mill has had a whole bunch of them they wanna bring in, and we wanted, you know, before we go any further, we'd wanna talk to them about.
What would it cost us to dispose of them? It's not on the schedule, right?
No, it's not a charge on the, there's no charge for.
So we should probably add that to the schedule then, if you were, especially if disposing a large amount. How much, you told me earlier today, fifty-something cents to?
It's fifty-eight cents plus the box.
Well, the box, though, obviously, so, the cost of the box, so a dollar, staff time and all that, you're both breaking even, I'd say, so.
Yeah, you're not gonna make a killing with it, but it's still, of course, it's, it's making, we're cooping some of it.
And there's certain items that you're not gonna make money off of, so.
Yeah, you know, and you're never gonna make money on light bulbs.
And it's, so the fluorescents are the ones that have mercury in them?
Right.
Right, so, yeah, we don't want that getting into the water, so.
We don't want people just smashing them, doing anything, so.
Exactly. And if they do dump them, well, and I understand it's the, the mill that wants to dispose of a large number, so they came to us, see if they, if we could do it there, so, they can do it there. So I understand that, appreciate them coming to us. We, but it opens up another sort of can of worms for us to deal with after tomorrow, basically. Everything has to happen after tomorrow, so, we wanna do it tonight anyways, but, can you get it? Our ordinance says that businesses cannot use the, the transfer station.
Not that they can.
No, they can, sorry, let me get it backwards, sorry. That they can use the transfer station, but our, our contract with, um.
Waste management.
Thank you, waste management, uh, through the COOP, uh, tells us that they, we cannot bring in commercial, uh, waste, only household waste.
Oh.
So, uh, the ordinance is in conflict. It's been the practice of every board, I think, since the inception of the, of the transfer station, to not allow businesses with the, I think the one exception may be the village vet, because there's literally no place for a dump, or a dumpster, and they bring like one, what's it, like one bag out.
Yeah, he's not an issue.
And all the medical stuff goes to a medical company to come pick it up, but, but he's the only one, so.
But this does not pertain to cardboard or stuff like that.
Right.
I mean, we don't have commercial.
Probably bringing in, right, wet trash.
Trash.
Yeah. So, but it opens up a larger conversation if we're gonna bring in, allow businesses to bring certain products. I mean, they aren't paying for it, so it may be a moot point, but we may want to, when we add on to, under where it says, um, uh.
Bulky.
Add on the transfer station one, too.
But they wouldn't necessarily be paying for, like, bulky items they would pay for, but they would bring glass for free, which would still have a cost, though it's a cheaper cost than trash.
All right, so we need to revise the, the transfer station ordinance. Or we don't, if, if the policy is we want to allow them, we allow them, but.
Is this, this is only pertaining to the light bulbs, or we?
Well, we, Rogers Auto Body brings cardboard already bailed to us, and we made money with that.
Yep.
Um, and C and J, they've been bringing cardboard since I've been here to the transfer station, we bail it, but we made money with that.
Off of that, too.
Yep.
That's the only thing we see these commercial entities bring in.
Okay.
The mill has assessed about light bulbs, we, we took, actually took a load from them, and then we started looking at it, and that's gonna cost us money to get rid of it, so we gotta, we're gonna talk to them about paying a fair share.
If we went into the, the, Mr. Allen is, is very agree.
Sure, we haven't, I don't think it's talked to him yet, but they, he gave us his number and stuff to call.
Oh, okay. In the past, we've been very agreeable, so.
You know, so I'm, I'm sure he, uh, to be able to get rid of them the right way is.
Yeah, right.
But the problem, Miles, is having an ordinance that allows businesses but only taking recyclables but not trash, and trying to regulate that is.
Right, it could become a problem.
Yeah.
I don't think it is at the moment, right?
But then I'm aware of it.
The only, you know, snap you, snap at the moment is the light bulbs.
We have a contractor that lives in town, again, how do you regulate where he's bringing his?
That's true.
Cause he's paying every time by check to, to dispose of his construction materials.
And you don't know where his clients.
But we don't know where he's getting all of that, I mean, not doing all his work and all, but I'm sure.
That's a valid point, but how are we gonna tie track down what?
Is that, do we make money on that, or?
Demo, demo we do, we try, you know, and he's not bringing in a lot of stuff, but it's, you know.
But again, he's not supposed to. You're only supposed to bring in stuff as a generator.
And he's paying actually with his business tax, you said, right?
He is, but he's also a resident, so it's really hard to tell him what came from his house and what didn't.
So it's, so we need to look at the ordinance. I mean, I guess, this, this is just reinvigorated and, and, and reminded us that we need to look at the ordinance again, so. So I would say that I'm fine with, if you want to negotiate with, with the Carter family mills, you know, owners, a dollar for a bulb at the moment, then, you know, they're willing to pay that fine. And then we need to get into the, into the fee schedule.
Yeah, we'll have to give them a call and see what they wanna, you know, if they're interested in paying.
Now, what are, do individuals bring them in too, George, so?
Yeah, we do get them from individuals, so that's, I mean, but you can't just charge certain people.
No, 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 I agree, I think that's right, I don't, we wanna be, we wanna be fair and equitable, so. But, but people are bringing them in, just individual, standards bring them in.
We get quite a few light bulbs. I mean, it's the fluorescent ones, we don't have nothing else we have to worry about, so.
Right, and the regular incandescent's always going to garbage it anyway, so. And we're gonna the glass, wow, I don't know, but.
We don't, we don't pour any glass.
No? I, you probably don't, I don't want this to throw.
They shouldn't be putting up the glass.
Right.
Because that's not a recyclable item.
All right. So, so the only thing that would put us in, uh, in jeopardy with our contract with waste management is stuff that goes on the contract, or?
The MSW.
Or demo.
MSW or demo, right?
Oi demo.
Yes.
Okay.
Both, they do both.
So that's confusing to me, like, so this, this one particular person is bringing, we think, maybe, commercial.
He's contracted.
Oh, he's bringing, bringing demo, not like, not regular garbage, right? It's a construction demo, so he's paying for it.
You know, he's paying for, you know, get rid of his, I mean, you can have a place to bring this stuff.
Yep, I mean, you can drive it up to.
I mean, if he's doing a small job, why would you wanna spend money to rent a dumpster when you can pay that with, you know?
I think the thing is, though, if you do a job, say, in, I was mad at you, basically. That might be a bad example, but, a town X, you're supposed to bring that demo list to town X, just like if they do, outside a contract to come to Rollins, or doesn't work. They're supposed to bring it here, not to wherever they live, but, again, how do you think, the problem is, you don't track them, follow them home and.
So they have to come and get a temporary permit, do they?
They can, contractors working on behalf of residents can do that.
Now, has it ever happened? I don't know. Realistically, I don't know. They probably are going back.
At least you have a place to bring it.
It's true.
We don't have none of that in some of us.
Yeah, wow.
And you're talking about, now they're gonna charge us extra for.
You should move to the side of.
Yeah, it's coming up.
Like, I don't wanna move it, but I've got enough houses in my days.
I get it, I get it.
No, but, I mean, now they're talking about charging the surcharge for their garbage bags to offset the sixty thousand dollars that waste management's charging them extra for recycling. So I told, I, I got into a, a conversation with one of the councilmen, and I said, you ought to start recycling.
Yeah, they don't have any recycling over there?
Well, they do cardboard.
That's it?
They have dumpsters of cardboard down at the, at the highway bond, but waste management takes it, makes a money with it, and they charge, and they still owe it.
We wanna know if we're into it.
You wanna go where services still their cardboard? We have no problem with the city, so, but let's not do that.
No, I mean, the thing is, is, you know, if they were bailing it, they'd be making money instead of throwing it away, you know?
Yeah, well, send them a mail. So, um, anyways, so we're good with a dollar for the bulk?
Yes.
Temporary for, for?
That has to be.
The bulk, and then we'll, um, we'll change the, the fee schedule.
We'll talk to them and see what they want, if they wanna do it or if they don't wanna do it, so.
Right, they're not allowed to figure out another way there. I'm sure it's gonna be cheaper to do it here than taking it somewhere else, but, I don't know.
Likely.
Okay, do we have anything else for George?
Stores.
Who?
Stores do.
Stores do what?
If they sell them, they have to accept them.
Accept them back?
Yeah.
Light bulbs? Yeah. Interesting.
Yeah, then they'll be looking for places to bring them.
Exactly, they'll be coming back here, it'll be a vicious circle, so. All right, anything else?
Nope.
All right, nothing on there? Thank you, George. Looks like we have nice weather for tomorrow, so a good week, I shouldn't be out plowing, that's a good thing.
We're gonna, at night, be attending a meeting at, uh.
Fire.
No.
No.
That meeting in, could trash.
Oh, N R R A.
N R R A, meeting on waste, they, they're gonna be talking about bailing plastics and the proper way or whatever, so. We have to fix it for about an hour or two, so we're gonna head away and see that, they'll give you one step on it, so we wanna check on that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, George.
No armor.
All right, beautiful, thank you. We aim to please everyone some more. Okay. I have one numerical.
About ten years ago now.
Okay. Neptune's uniforms, purchase order number one five eight eight, to purchase a bulletproof vest for the new officer of Malatac for up to seven hundred dollars.
I'll move purchase order one five eight eight to Neptune uniforms, up to seven hundred dollars for a bulletproof vest.
Second, so we didn't, um, we've bought one recently, but that officer's still using it, so never mind, Mark has a question. I know the answers.
Do, do we, do we have leftover vests from?
That's my question. I think it's a big. We do not, um, use, um, we don't transfer vests from person to person, because they're fitted for the person. Okay. Plus, they get stinky and smell like alcohol, because you're wearing them close to your body in some cases and whatnot, so. So I'm just. This is the, um, have you switched full-time to the ceramic plates you're talking about, or are we still in the cabler? No. The consensus is, the gen, the folks downstairs don't like wearing the outer vest that looks like you're ready to go to bed all the time. Right, right. They want, if they, they wanna wear the other vest, it's gonna be this version instead of the other one. Okay, fair enough.
That's more like a traditional uniform.
We have all, yeah. All right, any other questions? All right, all those in favor of purchase order fifteen eighty-eight, say aye. Aye opposed?
So you, obviously you made the offer to the gentleman that asked you, this is for the new?
This is for the new gentleman.
Yes.
I hope so, I'm gonna be buying a seven hundred dollar vest. Oh, yes, he did, by the way, yeah. He's already been cleared by the psychologist, medical's been cleared, and he's getting ready to do the polygraph. Purchase order number one five eight nine to the cognitive and behavior therapies of Newburyport for one pre-employment psychological test and evaluation for the new officer Malatac for four hundred dollars.
I will move purchase order one five eight nine to cognitive and behavior therapies of Newburyport for four hundred dollars for a pre-employment psychological test.
Second, any questions? All those in favor of purchase order fifteen eighty-nine, say aye. Aye opposed? All right, there you go. Purchase order number one five nine zero to Red Shoe Barn for one pair of duty boots for Officer Philbrook and one pair of duty boots for Officer Brooks. Less a discount of thirty-two fifty for us, for a total, grand total of two hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-eight cents.
I'll move purchase order one five nine oh to Red Shoe Barn for two ninety-two forty-eight for duty boots.
Second, any questions? All those in favor of fifteen ninety, say aye. Aye opposed? All right, and I'll show it up in fifteen ninety-one, but we'll jump right to number fifteen ninety-two to Galls Incorporated for thirteen of these quick clock combat Galls law enforcement versions. These are forty-two ninety-nine each, we need thirteen, one for each employee, for a grand total of five hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents, and that will come on our uniform, line that in. Opposed? The ones that we're currently wearing, carrying, expired in, uh, twenty seventeen. I mean, they're still good, but still, so we're gonna use expired ones for training purposes.
I'll move purchase order fifteen ninety-two to Galls Incorporated for five twenty-five eighty-eight for quick clock combat Galls.
Second, there's four yards of Galls on this one, that is.
Wow.
It's pretty impressive, actually. That's why I wanted to see it, like, wow, what do you get for all that money? That is impressive, actually. Hopefully that's one of the things we'll note after you. Exactly, no, for sure, yeah. All right, any questions or discussion for fifteen ninety-two?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wasn't sure what that was when you, I saw you pull it heavily. The electrician will be here Wednesday morning to change all the history late pictures, so that'll be done. And the last thing on my agenda is, I prepared two paper proposals. Okay. For, for recommendation for, for the staff downstairs, depending on which budget gets passed. Right. Once we know tomorrow, Wednesday, which one gets passed, what I will do is I will email you the proposal, and I'll give you, you know, a few days to review it, and maybe we can have a, a quick discussion Monday, or the following Monday, or, you know, whatever works for you folks. I'll at least give you a chance to review it, and, you know, I'll put my, uh, my reasons for, for doing this, so. Perfect, sounds good. Any questions for the chief?
Um, I don't think so.
We have anything else on the digital, right? They're all clear. Beautiful. Yeah, anything else for us? Especially if I ask you first, I guess. Oh, that's all the way, that's awesome. All right, we'll see you tomorrow at some point? At some point, I'll stop down, so, you know, we're training tomorrow night, so. Actually, let me, I wanna ask you one more thing, if you don't mind, we're getting. We had the opportunity to meet with the, I'm sorry, it's George, too, I forgot again, sit down with the firearm department staff, a couple, maybe, before Christmas, wasn't it? It was when, um, when Cameron passed away, we went over to see them, to see how they're doing, but, you know, we hadn't, we recognized we hadn't actually, as a board, been over to meet with them as a staff. So we also wanna do the same thing for the police department, I also wanna do it for Highway, all those employees, but for them to, you know, let us know what's happening, if they see things they want us to change, personnel policy, whatever it is. They're free to tell us, you know, what we're doing right or wrong, or whatever. I didn't want you, first of all, to think we forgot about your department, because we, we had just haven't had a chance to, to, to sort of align with Cameron passing. That, they, we meet weekly at a department, you don't do that at a department, right?
We need most of the month for the training.
Okay, and that's tomorrow?
That's tomorrow.
Okay, so now we're gonna have to wait till April, probably. Actually, April's bad, because we're actually meeting, instead of meeting at nighttime, we're meeting during the daytime during the school vacation, so we move to grade school, and we'll walk through and do some training and building surge and whatnot, anticipation of the exercise, of the active shooter exercise we have coming up, so. Okay, well, can we arrange something? Is it a huge hassle to get the, the staff together to, to meet with them, or? Actually, we're all meeting, I mentioned, we're actually all going to the training at the fire department for vehicle operation, so that might be a good time. Is that the one on the twenty-fifth? Twenty-fifth. Okay. So that might be a good time to, for all of us, we have to come back here anyway, if you wanna pop back over here after the training over there. Yeah, I mean, we, we, what we wanted to be, um, it's not a meeting, I mean, I guess we'd all be there, but it's not an actual, we, we want them to feel free to tell us what they think. The good, the bad, and the ugly, is that what I mean, so, um, what we haven't discussed yet is on the agenda, I think it's coming up next, actually. We, the, that thing starts at, what, six-thirty?
Yes.
So I was gonna say, we come in at six, have a brief meeting, then go over there.
Yep.
It's, it'll last like an hour, hour and a half, maybe, I guess, if that? Yeah, I think it's set for an hour and a half. Hour and a half, okay, so, if, if they're willing, and I think, are you willing to come back over there? Sure. Yep, okay. We'd love, we could just go downstairs, that's easier, you've got the meeting room down there, so. All right, I'll pass the word for the folks, so, please go back, you're up to training, so. Okay. If they don't want to, I mean, they, I mean, we, we won't always answer, they don't, they don't have to come, it's, you're all just, we wanna extend our thanks for all they do and to, um, and to hear what, you know. Well, I think they have a long, long way to reach, because, you know, it says, may I still have the passes? Yeah, well, it should've been happening.
Sure.
They only speak for us here, I mean, this year, so, it's something we should be doing. I mean, you guys do a lot of hard work for us, and you should know, I mean, we see you weekly, or. For your treatment, but, um, we don't get to see our officers, so, very often, unless it's a problem, and then, usually they're the best time, really, right? But we want them to know that we appreciate them, and then we want them to be heard, so, we really do, so.
Yep.
All right, so that'll work, that, that, that's perfect, I think.
That, that.
I owe the chief part time, I assume. Oh, yes. Okay, great. And hopefully, you end up with your law, so.
Mr. Morrisette is still in here?
He's still there. He's holding on, huh? He's got one year less than I do with the department.
Oh, you, I mean, he's one year less.
Well, he's been in the police office a long, because he started in Somerville when he was like seventeen years old, he was a, an adult cadet type of thing. Then he went to Southbrook, were part-time, and then we scooped him up over here, actually, his dad brought him over after he brought me on, so.
I, I know, I, I wonder if he'll remember this.
Me, I've had a nickname for you as a young child, but.
A little.
You never know.
I get pulled over by him, I get pulled over by him.
The tables are charred, I guess.
Yeah, that's true.
You can still get pulled over, though, so. All right, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. All right, so, we can go backwards just for a second, with the fire, under fire, Mark may be coming in, I don't know, but, um, but we're, we're gonna go over, we had said last week that we wanted to, in concept, go over, so, it's good they'll be there, and then, that, that works out perfectly, we'll be able to, um, meet with them afterwards, I mean, that's great.
So, send an email to the board, so that Denise is in the group that we're meeting at six.
I mean, if it's hardship for her, that's, we can try to make adjustments, I guess, but, six o'clock will work, okay, for you to come into a brief meeting.
Sure.
Mostly to, to sign whatever paperwork or does a person that has to be done, you know, if a citizen has a complaint or, or an issue or whatever, then you tell them. So it'll be, it won't be a full agenda, so, unless we can really talk quick. All righty then, so, it brings us to town administration, so, uh, tomorrow's town meeting, excuse me, the town election portion, um, at the Legion from seven to seven. You'll be there?
I will.
I will.
And I'll be there, Denise clearly is ill, so she won't be able to make it, so. I have a call I have to be on at five. It shouldn't, I hope it doesn't last long, so, but. Yeah, I'm available all day, it's just I, at five, they're gonna call me, so.
I gotta run out and go get my mother so she can vote. But yeah, I'll be, I'll be there for the majority of the day.
I'll be around to help whoever needs to do the help tomorrow, so. Alright, non-public personnel, we doing this now?
We can table it till later.
Can we wait till the end of the?
Why don't we do that, why don't we do it at the end?
At the end of the, because we have to make people coming in and out. I'm thinking we might be, I'll finish up sooner or later. Alright, so budget committee secretary position, we've extended an offer to?
Well, I was wondering if the board might like to extend an offer.
Okay, let me back up. You have met with a candidate and you are recommending someone that we can extend an offer.
Yes, yes, her name is Anna May Russo, she came in on Friday morning and Salma happened to be working, so she got to meet her as well.
Thursday afternoon.
Oh, thank you. All my time with Salma gets sort of mushed together, but she, she made the time and she came in and she was very pleasant, she's got good writing skills.
Is this the person that was vetted by the Trump Whiteway too?
That, yes.
Or she submitted her resume to the two people, right?
Right, and he spoke with her as well and found her to be suitable, so I think she'll be a good candidate. She's gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna have her in, if the board approves her hiring, we can make that probationary period contingent upon the background check. And then have her introduce some training and then if the board is amenable, I was hoping that we could have her fill in for Salma for the eighteenth. Because Salma will not be here next Monday.
What's her name again, sure?
Anna May, one word.
Anna May, yep.
Russo.
With a Y or an E?
I thought it was an E, that's what I wrote.
M A Y. A N N A, M A Y.
Fifty fifty chance. Russo?
Russo.
Russo it is, okay. So why don't, are you ready to vote or?
I have stock water.
Well, we need a pay rate.
Do we not, was that not?
I'm not sure if it was in the posting, but you know, there, there was some discussion back and forth about it and I did not discuss that with her.
What was the, what was the?
I think the last posting was eleven, I'm not sure though, so I just wanted to confirm that and make that.
I would say you need to, you need to figure out what the last posting was.
Yeah, I think it was eleven, alright.
Because we had to raise it a few times, right, because we weren't getting anything.
Right, I'm almost certain it was eleven.
I think it was eleven, so.
So you don't know if she'll accept it at eleven?
Well, I, I did not offer it to her, so.
Okay.
I think she will, I think she's very excited about it, she's. Yeah, she'll be excited about it, so if you're amenable to eleven. Why don't we do that, if it turns out to be a different rate, we can amend that later for future.
So she, alright, let's get a motion first. I'll move we extend an offer of employment to Anna May Russo for the position of budget committee secretary at eleven dollars an hour. So, I'm pretty sure that's what it was.
I think so too.
We started at ten, or ten fifteen?
I think it was ten fifty and you bumped it to eleven.
Right, because we're having issues finding anyone even at eleven, we're having issues, so. And the nice thing is she's also willing to fill in.
For other boards.
Is she willing to fill in or do the ZBA, did we talk to her about that?
I did talk to her about that, she seems really excited about that. It's gonna require, to the level at which I would like for somebody to do that job, which is to say the level at which it's been done. It's gonna require some training. She's gonna need to get up to speed on the regulations. I rely on the current person to compare the applications with the regulations to make sure things seem to match and make sense. Sending out the notice, creating the notice.
Sure.
Notice is a decision, there's a lot more than just taking minutes.
Sure, clearly, is there a training via the municipal association?
No, not really, actually.
That's unfortunate.
It is unfortunate. But it's okay, I think she's a quick learner and we can handle it. I'll have Sarah step in too and show her how things specific to the zoning board should be written out, the notice of decision and.
Sarah's still staying on plan though, right?
She will stay on planning.
Okay, just not a ZBA?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Should we amend her title from budget committee secretary to like?
Could you do minute taker, just broad minute taker?
It's semantics, but.
I think, I think we just keep her on the budget committee secretary and she's agreed to fill in when needed, but she's not being hired for that. She's being hired specifically for the budget committee, so. Alright, are there, and any other questions?
Nope.
Alright, all those in favor of hiring Anna May Russo for budget committee secretary, say aye.
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 Thank you.
You, I appreciate her interest. Alright, department head meetings, you mentioned Bob or George, whenever, but I sent them an email. I don't think either of them write it, neither of them mentioned it, but April fifth. So the meetings before were done quarterly.
Oh, okay.
So that seems to be the, the, best way to go for that. If they feel like they need to be monthly, we can, we can discuss that. I'm not opposed to doing it monthly, but I figured if we're gonna start up again, maybe at least we should start it for the end of the war.
Yep.
So, April fifth, and I suggested in the morning to them, I'll let you all, I'll let you know, and Denise, I'll let you all know. What the, what the response is, so. Policy review, so we're keeping welfare on as a placeholder. So after tomorrow, I guess, we'll see if there's interest in any further review and personnel policy as well. We recognize that there may be some deficiencies there and that we want to take a look at that. Or town administration, well, how's about that for impeccable timing, mentally aboard, why don't you come on when you get? And we're on recreation. How's that for divine providence? Now, so the first thing we have still on here is the job descriptions. Do you want to set the scene and we'll do a second for Celia, I can keep your breath from coming in?
So Denise didn't get a chance to review these according to the salary. The, the job descriptions were approved by the board last week with the exception of.
Salary.
Salary, so I reviewed that, given the recreation budgets that you forwarded today, thank you. I subsequently spoke with Denise Hock because there were things about budget lines that were kind of confusing. And so that's why I worded it the way I worded it, so. I will walk you through the changes that I made, the first one, summer camp director, it's the only director. I changed the, instead of wage range, it says salary, it's up to six hundred dollars a week. The budget covers that, but it gives the committee flexibility to not pay out quite that much if they don't feel the need to. And so for the salaries, I've put up to.
Let me ask for me.
So in the summary of essential job functions, the last one I added must be available for the, you know, for all eight weeks of camp.
I think that's appropriate.
That was Celia's recommendation.
Last year we had three to four staff members ask for one week off and we were severely short-staffed for that one week.
It all had to be the same week.
The week after.
A week after, alright.
So then Camp Raleigh assistant director. That went from a wage range to a salary of up to five twenty a week. With the same, under job functions, must be available all eight weeks of camp, no other edits.
Good, okay.
Team camp assistant director, you didn't see this one last week, there was just one assistant director, but Camp Raleigh and Team Camp both have assistant directors and.
I, I thought we saw, but okay.
Okay, perhaps, so we're, we're just gonna revisit to be sure. I've named it specifically Team Camp Assistant Director versus Camp Raleigh Assistant Director for clarity. They are different amounts because they're different budgets.
Sure.
So the Team Camp Assistant Director is up to four hundred dollars a week, there are different hourly assumptions, hourly wage, even though they're salary, based on different hourly amounts. I did get your last minute, yes, and this reflects that, but I, I'm hoping it will go back to committee. I was operating off of perhaps an incorrect budget when I created what that up to amount was going to be. Celia sent a revised amount based on a subsequently approved budget. So this amount reflects what she said, but again, it's an up to amount, so I'm hoping the committee will revisit and make sure that the actual salary is covered by the budget and agreed upon by the committee.
But I was going to say, the committee also discussed sets camp, that it didn't work having two assistant directors. It makes more sense to have two directors so that the Team Camp Director can be independent of the Camp Raleigh Director. So they would, it should be, instead of assistant.
A Team Camp Director.
Team Camp Director, the word assistant should come out of that.
Okay.
So we're still gonna, but the salary remains the same?
I believe so.
Up to four?
Yeah, yes, and so we should.
So it should be Director of Camp Raleigh and Director.
So Camp Raleigh Director and then a?
Team Camp Director. So we changed the structure slightly?
So it's Team Camp Director, there's process other work system, are you all ready with that one? Agreed with that, yeah.
Okay, and then for the summer camp counselor, I revised this. Taking, for the wage range, I took out all references to dollar amounts and it just says depended upon experience and qualifications. And I did that because of my conversation with Dee, because what she said conflicted with my conversation with Denise. So I think there's still some maybe misunderstanding about how much you're actually paying your counselors, but I wanted to make sure that the board had the opportunity to get this one approved, so you can, the directors are more pressing because they need to hire them first.
I would imagine if you were in your second or third year, it would get a different way than.
And, and the wages that were on there did not reflect accommodating people who had been here last year and probably made already above that wage. So that's why I, I did that. There's also, you may potentially see a fifth job description for a Team Camp Counselor, should they elect to. They have just one employee for Team Camp, this, just this one director, so they may, you know, they may rely on volunteer help. Or they may choose to hire a counselor, but I'm not submitting that job description yet.
As long as within their budget, fine.
Yeah, it is budgeted.
It is budgeted.
This, this one doesn't have that eight week.
Right.
To be, the camp counselor.
It was not clear to me whether or not that was necessary for the counselors.
Because we fluctuate on the number of kids and oftentimes we do not have as many kids as we might need counselors for. So, and as we get closer to the summer, if they request a day off and it's a day we know we're gonna be later on campers, we give them the day off and it saves us financially.
Right, that makes sense. I was wondering that too, that makes a lot of sense, so.
And then we also, towards the end of the summer, get into a lot of high school kids doing sports and so if they're sixteen or seventeen, we may want to do sports.
Alright, so what are you looking, you need approval for these salaries?
We need all of the job descriptions as revised.
Because we would like to get these people hired.
They're, they're trying to get directors from UNH and that window is closing quickly.
So I think we can make one motion to cover, alright, so I'll move that we accept the amended job descriptions for, for the rec position.
Second, alright, so motion is to accept the amended job descriptions for the summer recreation camps. Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Perfect, alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
For that, okay, and let's talk about grant application.
So last year we ran into receiving grants during the summer, so we were hoping to get a jumpstart on it this year. We have one granter, granting agency that needs their application this week. Last year the process had been the ex officio to the committee, reviewed them along with the chairs.
She's under the weather, so it's not gonna work, so.
So I was wondering, do we change the process, how, and I was also made aware that the board needs to know what is coming in because the rec committee cannot accept it, it's up to this board to accept it. And so.
And, and to be clear, so the ex officio would review it, but we still need to come to the full board to whether we're agreed or whether or not we would sign off on the grant application, because ultimately we have to be the people making the application, so, right? So, do we have it, I was in the email, I didn't get home in time to read.
Well, this application just got finished.
Oh, okay.
So it didn't make it into any email, I was hoping to have it finished earlier today.
That's alright.
This is a grant funder who's local, it's. And we are, we discovered at our last meeting, or shortly prior to our last meeting, that we need a license to show videos in camp. Or come up against the fines. And so this is.
I mean copyrighted material.
Copyright, videos and music are copyrighted material, so the fines range from seven hundred and fifty dollars up to, I think, a hundred and fifty thousand.
But if you put the radio on, you're okay, right?
Yes.
It's covered under their license.
That's about the license.
So we have this information about camp licenses with the American Camp Association. So we would like to apply for the three months summer only subscription, which is three hundred dollars.
And they're willing to cover the Rollinsford Education Association.
We're asking them to help us cover it. Because it was not something that we included in our budget and we hope to in the future include it in our budget.
So you're asking the Rollinsford Education Foundation for seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Three hundred for this and then four hundred and fifty dollars to take a group of campers, of roughly sixty campers to the Colonel Paul Wentworth House. And it's a hundred and fifty dollars per group of twenty. So that's how we end up with four hundred and fifty dollars for the total of seven hundred and fifty. We did it in twenty seventeen, but we were unable to do it again in twenty eighteen due to funding issues. And we only paid them a hundred dollars in twenty seventeen and it didn't even cover their materials used. So we would like to make a good pay effort.
So let's see, are there any, any financial responsibilities on behalf of the town, I don't see any.
On page, the bottom of page three and page four, it says evaluation, how will you measure success? Describe the evaluation tools, so I've said that we will keep track of the number of times the license is used and send out a survey to participants in the.
Alright, they'll take pictures of the events, like going up to the One Worth House and all of that and the kids watching the movies or whatever. So that I understand, but, so there's no, if for some reason the grant isn't fully used, is there a responsibility to return any unused money, or?
That I am not aware of.
They may not, so it's not on here, so I just want to make sure.
Everything in blue were their questions and some of the stuff in it. One of the requirements under collaboration is that everybody has a background check, which is part of our hiring process anyway. So.
It doesn't look, I mean, it's also a local, it's not like it's a, it's some of business, so it's.
And we did use them in twenty seventeen for our grant.
We did, okay.
But they paid directly to the vendor.
Okay, are they gonna do that again, or?
I don't know.
Okay, that would be easier, but it probably would be.
So I, that is a question for this week, is do they pay directly to the vendor or do they pay to us?
That would be easier, I would imagine, if they pay to the vendor, huh?
Yes, and if they pay the town and the town pays the vendor, then it's coming out of your budget as an expense. Even though it has offsetting income, so for that reason alone, it would be desirable for them to pay directly.
Both of them, so it's up to pay the One Worth House and Camp America.
American Camp Association.
Sorry, American Camp Association.
And I do make a suggestion in the grant that if we were to get this, we would collaborate with RAF or other organizations like Sam and Paul's Family Fun Day to provide movies outside of the camp hours to the community, if that's applicable with this. It doesn't say that you can't. It doesn't say that you can't um, do it anytime.
Well, I think, well, you mean for the American Camping Association?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know, it's-
It probably has to be associated with rec though.
I, yeah, I think so, well, let's look, you've got a whole-
Um, it's like number-
Eighteen different terms and conditions.
Under the last question, under questions and answers, if we rent out our facility to other groups, can we be liable for copyright infringement? Yes, the owner can be held vicariously liable or considered a copyright infringement, so. But I don't think it says that it has to be within selected hours.
I'm reading it, alright, so. Okay, so under terms and conditions of this license you wanna purchase, it says under rights, public performance authorized by this agreement shall take place in the facility, facilities identified in the application or as licensee otherwise modifies and shall be via any means, it's actually really small.
That's okay.
Originally intended for personal use only and put not limited to DVD, blah blah blah. I don't think you can, so yeah, I think it has to be specific to, to the rec department at the summer camp, but I don't think you can extend a license and share, no, I think they would have to purchase their own.
Okay.
And it does allow you to show unlimited, it says, does this umbrella license allow us to show movies outside? Yes, the umbrella license allows for unlimited indoor/outdoor exhibitions at your camper conference center. We're only at your, you know, so it's, it's not like you could say, oh, it's family fun day, we're gonna-
But the camps kind of, does it have a specific location, is it the grade school?
The grade school.
Is it the field of the grade school?
Yeah, the, the, yeah, we could have it on the field in the grade school because that's the camp location.
Yeah, you can have it there, you can have it inside or outside.
Or at the ball field, with somebody had suggested projecting it onto the firehouse.
I mean, you might be able to if it's during the day, it's a camp activity and then all the kids are being bussed over.
Right.
But if it's like at night, just a general, a type of fundraiser, the whole town go, you're gonna, you're violating this license, so.
Yep.
And you still have, you submit to your seven hundred fifty dollar fine, so.
I made some minor text to edits, you might wanna take a look at, they're, they're just minor grammatical things. Thank you for doing that, it's good, and it's a great idea.
And are there any others besides the first page?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you want, I can make those edits and then forward it, you just like forward for signature.
I don't mind, so.
Um, that would be great, especially if it could happen tomorrow, because then I can go down and get signatures easily tomorrow.
I mean, it's, oh yeah, so you can just come see us, I said, why? Come to my office, but come on over, enjoy your ride, it's pleasant. Um, yes, that's true, you could just come down tomorrow. I mean, I don't have any objection, but it seems pretty clear with these edits, I mean, they're just, they're minor sort of couple grammatical things, it's not like-
This is a great idea.
Say go forward and do it, we'll sign off on it tomorrow then.
Okay.
Do we, do we, alright, do it, let's do a motion.
Sure, I'll move that we authorize, I guess it's the rec committee?
Yep.
Uh, to move forward with a grant request to the Rollinsford Education Foundation, any amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Any discussion, alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, alright, so, we have to sign off on it though, so you're free to do it, just make the edits that, so, Caroline, Celia suggested, Caroline suggested to you, Celia, and then she'll put it, email it back to her and she'll write down, that's on point tomorrow, and we will sign, I'll get I for that.
Um, our contact person has been Diane, the president of the organization, and worked on her email address.
Actually, the back page isn't changing, is it? It's just these pages.
Good point.
It's just a, no, it's just a couple grammatical things on that, so I mean, I just, there you go.
Still, thanks, but you could change page one to have you buying a car or something.
I just did that, good luck. Okay, well, yeah, not buying a car. Alright, so we will, I will give this back to you like this, and you know, to-
Okay, I'm gonna keep the back page and give you DC.
Yeah, the one with the edits you might wanna give to the person making the edits, yeah, sorry about that.
So, the process for grants?
Yep, you can bring them to us and tell Denise to back up. So if you have others this week, or next week, if she's not back, you just bring them to the meeting and we'll-
Okay, they should come to the meeting anyways, so that you all are-
Yeah, but I'm saying you would normally forward it to the ex officio who would revise, review it, they make revisions if necessary, and then forward them to us.
Okay.
But, yeah.
If it's possible to get them emailed ahead of time, then that increases everybody's opportunity to try to read them ahead of time.
We have a question, this one's pretty straightforward.
You have many more coming, or?
We hope so.
We hope to help offset. Um, last year we applied for, I believe, four or five, and we only got one. And it was um, fifteen hundred dollars, I think, or a thousand dollars, and we used it for STEM education in the camp. We brought in the Washington Observatory and a UNH student who did STEM in the summer. And then we used the remaining four hundred dollars for the doodle bugs program at the end of the summer.
Right.
It was good, so.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No problem.
Anything else we'll send over, or you're here?
Um, well, I think we're pretty good to go.
Awesome.
Trying to get staff, oh, yes, that's the other thing, registration opened on Friday.
Good.
And we already have sixteen kids registered.
Wow, that's great.
Thirteen of them are out of town and three of them are in town, and they are all from Camp Raleigh.
Wow, okay.
That's incredible.
So, that is where-
You all have earned yourself a great reputation apparently.
Evidently. That is that.
Alright, great.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too, thank you. Alright, let's do uh, building permits. Building permit, rest hold up. Okay, so.
Instead you fill out a building permit?
You hardly stay in minutes, why do you fill out your building permit?
Um, we have building permit, um, twenty nineteen dash oh one, uh, I'm sorry, oh one two, sorry, I'm bringing, uh, twenty nine Heinz Street.
Really, here's for sale.
Renovations of twelve hundred fifty, uh, twelve thousand five hundred dollars fee, one hundred fifty five dollars, looks like Mr. Clark has reviewed.
And that's with apologies, that's with profuse apologies.
Okay. Alrighty then, alright, I, um, alright, so purchase order, purchase order. Building permit twenty nineteen dash zero one two, by Mr. Clark, I'm just repeating exactly what you just said, so it's granted, we have a practice here, sorry. Not gonna expire tonight, it's gonna expire, sorry.
Do I have a license for Noel, something?
Spine in there?
Thank you.
Nancy Diane?
Do I have a license for Noel?
Apparently the new year view tonight. Alright, so we have signed off on that, I, I'm wired in law, I guess it's another.
Twenty nineteen dash oh one three, seventeen pound, have fifty thousand dollars worth of-
That makes sense.
Fee five twenty five, Mr. Clark does-
Thank you for following up on that, I wondered if they had a building permit for all that work out, or how, but, apparently they do now. Alright, so purchase, alright, building permit twenty nineteen oh thirteen has been reviewed, but Mr. Clark, that's five hundred and twenty five dollars fee, alright.
Look, eleven?
We're cutting you a lot of slack tonight, Michael.
Well, the time change.
Yes.
Oh, it's really screwed, it really has screwed me up. I, I didn't sleep very well last night.
I didn't, you?
Um, I don't know, we give them a year, right, so six months rather, so, yesterday was-
That would be September.
September, right.
We give them a twelve.
And September eleventh, it's maybe, whatever.
I think it's September.
No, we gotta tell the eleven, they're gonna renew it, they need to.
Alright, building permit twenty nineteen dash oh one four, three pound, have four thousand dollars worth of electrical work, fee is ninety dollars.
Alright, from the review by Mr. Clark.
And twenty nineteen dash oh one five, one Doherty Lane, thirty eight hundred dollars for a new roof, fee sixty five dollars.
Sixty five?
Sixty five.
Sixty.
Does it say sixty?
Oh, it's a new roof on a garage, by the way, it's not, that's pretty cheap for a new roof, but. Alright, so is that the last building permit? So we're gonna take a break for a moment.
Well, yeah, what are we giving them to with money, is what we have to do for them?
So why don't you, there's that, did you fill it out?
As much as I could.
As much as, let's see.
I had the money.
So, all of that, we got the time, we got the money.
We just need the number.
So what we will do, Tom, you go, submitted your request, um, you will have uh, uh, we will put it in the folder for review, um, and have Clark review it and then send it back to us. Clearly the roofers come tomorrow, I get it, they come when they come, I get that, so, um.
Tom's building tomorrow?
No, Tom comes in next Monday, because of that Monday, so, but you'll be in, whatever day you, when do you come, Thursday?
Thursday and Friday.
So you can fill out the, fill in like the map, a lot of map number and all that, when you come.
Yeah.
So it'll be, it's not gonna get acted on anyways until next Monday anyways, so we'll leave it in the folder for, for you to revise when you come in on Thursday and then Mr. Clark can take a look at it.
Okay, I've got a couple of purchase orders, um, I move purchase order sixteen oh one to Andrea Cass for three hundred eight dollars and twenty five cents for two thousand eighteen lien notices.
So, that's really for postage, and I would suggest that we cross out Andrea's name and maybe write postmaster.
We're not gonna second her, right?
No.
We'll second it, now we're talking, we're not-
I'm sorry, yeah.
Unless you already paid for it, but like out of her pocket.
I don't believe, no, um, but, but if this is another situation where the two hundred dollar purchase policy, you know, nobody can put that on a credit card, so then you need a check for it, but she doesn't know how much it's gonna cost until that day when she's actually doing it. So, I'm not sure how we're gonna execute.
Should we do an up to number and serve?
Um, yeah, well, you know, that's always implied, you don't have to spend the whole thing, you know, so.
But I mean, it should be-
That's not really the issue, my, you know, my issue is like-
So we need to revive, under policy review, we need to put-
Purchasing would be great.
Yeah, so we need to add it.
I can add purchasing, thank you.
Alright, so do, are there, do we have any other questions or concerns, or sixteen oh one, clearly it's to the postmaster.
Yes.
We need to send these out because we need to send them out.
It's the day.
Yeah, it is the day, alright, miss forty five of them, that need to go up. What do they cost, six eighty five now for certified now? That's how they have to go up, so, alright, all those in favor of purchase order sixteen oh one, say aye?
Aye.
Purchase order sixteen oh three to LHS Associates for eighteen hundred ninety one dollars and thirty two cents for town ballots and programming.
Second.
So, this is for tomorrow's election?
Yes, for the ballots, just the town portion.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, my next question, so it's definitely town.
She sent the same, it's on one invoice, but she sent it to the school.
But they got their own, well, clearly it doesn't add up to-
Right.
Gotcha, okay. Alrighty then, any questions, concerns?
No.
Alright, all in favor of purchase order sixteen oh three, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alrighty, that's it for the list folder.
You have your dispersment form.
I have my dispersment form, I'd like to get paid to the quarter. I can't sign, no.
Oh, I just said just sign it.
I can't sign my own dispersment form, so.
And those are, those need to be approved.
This is the blue folder, I'll do that.
There is, oh, it's a-
Apparently you wanna be paid, well, imagine that, alright, it's that time of year again.
It's four dogs to license here.
Four dogs, that's each year, alright.
Cheaper to get a county license.
Alright. Is this okay, we, is this?
Oh, next week.
Actually, oh, there you go, I will put them together, then we're gonna sign it, I mean data, rather. Please. Thank you, alright, put it back, yeah. Alright, this is a notice, I guess this is the only thing in here besides the dispersment.
Yes, it is.
Um, a notice from the Rollinsford Zoning Board of Appeals, that we are in a butter, that on Tuesday, March nineteenth, there will be a session of the ZBA at seven PM here in the Rollinsford Town Hall, here are the following appeals, case number nineteen oh one of Mario Cassinelli, also known as Dave Otto Salvage, seeking an appeal from an administrative decision in relation to section five point two, the non-conform use of section six point two use regulation to the Rollinsford zoning board. Uh, and case nineteen oh two, also brought by Mario Cassinelli, Cassinelli, pardon me, also known as Dave Otto Salvage, and he's seeking a variance from section five point two. I don't know if I'm, I'm available to go next week, but I know we wanted the chief of police to attend and Tom.
All of the department heads and the board and Tom were notified via email and got that.
They were, okay.
So everybody's aware that Tom has confirmed he's available.
He'll coordinate, make sure the chief is also available to bring his files.
He got it via email, but I will confirm it with him.
I think his, certainly was eye opening to me, his interactions with the-
What time do they need?
Seven, I guess. Let's see, life isn't Chicago, I don't know. Looks, uh, yeah, I'll listen tomorrow, yeah, I might be able to go actually, but Kate has to go to South Dakota next week, so, I don't know. I honestly, I can't say if I can go or not yet, I have to check in and see what we have for, okay. But I will try to go, I, I-
I have a, I have an engagement right after work, but-
Alright, well, we don't, we don't have a role of the board to play, it would be, yeah, I would like to air it soon, that's, I'm more, I'm curiosity, I think the chief and Tom will handle it fine on our behalf, but anyways, if I can make it, I'd like to go myself, so, alright, I think, almost to the end. Uh, we just need your correspondence, board member updates, we just skipped right by that Celia came in, but I guess we're both going to the town election, there's an election right here, alright. Do you have one? Twenty eight, alright, well, seeing none, I wish everyone well, good luck around the election tomorrow. Oh, we gotta go to non-public, oh, aren't you good?
Thank you, Miles, good job.
Sorry, alright, so I'd like a motion, please, to go into non-public to deal with a personnel issue.
Move that we go into non-public to deal with the personnel issue.
I will second that, we'll do a roll call, Miles?
Yes.
Mike, yes, we are in non-public, we'll have our town administrator attend, we will be adjourning, unless the fire chief comes in, I can't imagine any, but we'll be adjourning right afterwards, so. You're more than welcome to stick around if you want. we'll be adjourning right afterwards, so, you're more than welcome to stick around if you want, I intend to go home, so.
No, I'll take my dog license and go.
I'll take your dog license and go. Well, I guess.
I'm glad that I can save the town of Dave.
We appreciate that, seventy five cents.
Your life, you're gonna need it.
What town, well, how much is it, I don't know, I wouldn't.
It varies whether your dog is muted or spayed or not.
Oh, I know that, I paid that.
And they're seniors, so it's only like three dollars.
No, I meant, how much did it cost to mail?
So, oh, fifty cents.
I don't.
We've got a bunch of. I don't know, because it's got the actual metal tag in it, right, so it might as well call them all.
Thirty hit stamp, I can tell you that, I think it's a regular stamp, but, um, she has him hand stamped them and not like send them to mail them.
Well, my Kate brought them home because she went down, she came down to about Athlete because she had to go to Iowa today. I haven't even had any idea where she put them now, so, our dogs are licensed, but it's not on their collar, I don't know.
That's okay, because they're not out of compliance until May or April.
Perfect, they don't have their current ones on either, like the leash broke, they're gonna have to buy new ones.
Kate, just don't have it be caught putting in the neighbor's yard, you'd be all set.